Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Troy, thank you so much for that. It is Tuesday, January 24th, 2023. Before I call the meeting to order, we do have the honor of having Pastor Jack Sayer with us for the invocation. Pastor Sayer?
Let's pray together. Father, we want to thank you for this day that you made. We want to thank you for these leaders that have been appointed for such a time as this. And Lord, this agenda that's before us, I just thank you that you are going to give wisdom, direction, peace, harmony, patience. Lord, Douglas County is growing so fast, and so we definitely need your help. So we pray that your will will be done on earth, right here also in Douglas County, as it is in heaven. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Pastor Sayer, thank you so much for joining us today. So at this time, I will call the meeting to order if you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, under God, with freedom, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Attorney Pratt, do we have certification of the agenda today?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Chris Pratt with the County Attorney's Office. All of the items on today's agenda have been reviewed by our office and meet initial approval.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Pratt. So do any Commissioners have disclosures for items on the agenda today?
I have none.
No, sir.
And I have none either. With that, we'll move to item two on our agenda today, which is Citizen Comment and Organization Comments. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than what is scheduled on today's regular agenda. You will be prompted to comment on those items at the appropriate time. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. Please state your name and where you reside prior to making any comments, and you will have up to three minutes. Commissioner's comments, if any, will follow all Citizen comments. Are there any Citizen comments?
Chair, we do have some comments in the room. Folks, come on up one at a time, and please address the board from the dais.
And if you all want to come up together, that's fine, too.
Okay, for them, we'll let them come up together. And Chair, they are ready to go at your prompt, sir.
Aye. Thank you. I can see them. If you'd like to just state your name and where you're from?
My name is Jack Hamilton, and I'm from Sedalia, Colorado. I'm the Vice President of the Oakland OKs 4-H Club.
Hi, I'm Dylan DeWes. I'm from Castle Rock, and this is my second year in 4-H. Last year, I did archery and went to state. This year, I'm doing archery air rifle 22, and I'm raising rabbit.
My name is Charlize Kitten, and I'm from Sedalia. My name is Charlize Kitten, and I'm from Sedalia. This is my third year in 4-H. I do market chickens and market turkeys. Last year, I won grand champion for Best Poultry Showmanship, and also I won first place for Best Turkey, Bronze Turkey Tom, and first place for Best Boiler's Meat Chicken. 4-H has taught me to have a lot of patience and how much work it is to put food on a table.
The motto of 4-H is making the best better. But when I joined at the age of five, I didn't care about any of that. I just knew I was having fun and doing some cool projects. But 4-H gave me my first experiences in community service, public speaking, and leadership. Since then, 13 years later, I've volunteered for over 450 hours. I've spent years at a speech and debate club, and I've served as Vice President of my 4-H club, as Leadership Ambassador for my school, and as a member for Colorado Young Leaders. 4-H was instrumental to all of this. I'm just one of 50 members of the Oakland OKs and one of over 450 members in Douglas County 4-H with similar stories to mine.
Our members range from five to 18 years old. Last year, the members of our club completed 199 projects. 4-H has 43 different project categories, such as leadership, shooting sports, computer science, welding, woodworking, and photography, as well as many animal projects such as rabbits, dogs, sheep, goat, poultry, and beef.
Every year, each club does two community service projects. Last year, my club, the Oakland OKs, made 90 care packages for elderly shetins. Each package included a handmade card, a full-size toiletry item, and an activity book with some candy. We also volunteered for two cleanup days at Calf Royal Ranch. Overall, club members volunteered 200 hours in Douglas County.
All 4-H clubs are run by adult volunteers, and nothing can be done without these amazing volunteer leaders. Last year, the Oakland OKs adult volunteers contributed 490 hours for a value of $15,440. Thank you very much.
Guys, if you want to stay put for just a moment, I think probably all three of us would love to address you. But let me first say, Jack, Dylan, and Charlisse, thank you so much for being with us. You honor us with your presence, and your leadership and commitment to our community is really significant. Our board has an opportunity to actively participate in the fair and rodeo every year and the junior livestock auction. And I think I recognize the three of you from at least part of that sale. So thank you for the courage to come before us today. I know it's a school day, so hopefully this contributes a little bit to your education. And maybe not. Let me open it up to my board for any comments.
Well, well done, guys. Well done. Although I do have a note of criticism. Young lady, if you're going to speak at this podium, I'm sorry, we need you to grow a little taller. Can you do that for us? Can you commit to that for us? You're going to grow a little taller? Okay, very good. Otherwise, excellent job, guys. Well done. I hope, as our Chair said, this is a good educational experience for you. Keep it up. Keep up everything you're doing with 4-H. Keep up your public speaking. You never know when you too might have a job that requires you to do that.
I'd like to thank you for being here. In the six years that I have been a Commissioner, I have just been in awe of what I see at the county fair every year from you and at the auction, and I'm amazed at the work you all do. So thank you for what you do for us. And I have a question for you. Would you be interested in having a picture with the Commissioners down in front? Would you like that?
Sure.
Okay, why don't we do that? Can somebody, Doug, get a picture of us?
And, Mr. Chair, just while we're walking, I just, for the kids and any parents or people watching, we do have this on YouTube, and Drew here can get you a cut of that if you'd like to keep it. I saw you recording on your phones. I'm going to show it to my son about public speaking, because, and he's 19, so that's an impressive bunch.
Well, thank you, Oakland OKs, for joining us today. We certainly appreciate you, and we'll see a lot more of you later this year at the fair. So with that, let me continue with Citizen Comment. Is there any additional Citizen Comment in the room?
Chair, we do. Ma'am, please come on forward. And Chair, she is ready to go at your prompt.
Great. Hello, ma'am. If you want to just state your name and where you're from?
My name is Katie Barrett, and I'm from Castle Rock. Excuse me. Well, I'm here to express my concern about the B O C C's lack of representation and the embrace of extremism in Douglas County. I remind you of your obligation to represent all the citizens of Douglas County, not just the people who think as you do and have given you money or favors. I'm calling out your body's resistance to embrace the safety and security of our community using proven practices. For example, common sense gun laws, like locking up weapons not in your immediate control. Your support of such a practice would prevent countless suicides and remove the easy accessibility of guns. Next is water availability, and the attempted theft of this scarce commodity from remote counties is unacceptable. Our money should not be used for railroading communities. I urge you to explore other options, such as putting greater emphasis on conservation and expanding the reuse of water. It's time to consider water availability when OKing plans for the tens of thousands of new homes. You're acting irresponsibly. However, my most serious concern is the board's embrace of extremist organizations that are a cancer to our community. Ms. Thomas and Mr. Teal, bowing to these abhorrent organizations is a front to my moral compass. Joe Altman leaves the FEC with veiled threats of violence. FEC claims adherence to the Bible with cherry-picked verses. America is a polaristic society. We have all walks of life and religion in our great country, as the founders intended. Christianity is not the designated religion of America. Your fealty to FEC in your pledges or the hugging of FEC leadership is in violation of your oath of office and the Constitution. If FEC threatens you with recalls and other actions, then I'm not being truly represented if I disagree with the FEC message. I leave you with the Bible verse, John 4:20. Whoever claims to love God yet hates a brother or sister is a liar. Expand your heart and representation. And P.S., I want to thank Mr. Layden for his support of the HART project here in Douglas County. Thank you.
Ms. Barrett, thank you for your comments. Let me open it up to the board if there was any response or if you wanted to save your comments following Citizen Comment.
Do I get a picture with the County Commissioners?
It's a public meeting. You are certainly welcome to take any photographs you like, but I'm not hearing any comments from the board, so Ms. Barrett, thank you for your time. I'll ask if there's any other Citizen Comment in the room.
Thank you, Mr. Layden.
Any other Citizen Comment in the room? Okay. So, Troy, do we have any Citizen Comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner Layden. I have no online comment.
Okay. With that, I'll close Citizen Comment and move on to item, well, actually, before moving on to item three, I'll ask again if there are any Commissioner's comments.
I have no comment, other than, you know, this is a forum where all may come and speak their mind, and of course, we always ask that when you come, you speak the truth, but all comments are always welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Thomas?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we'll move on to item three on our agenda today, our Consent Agenda. And before we accept a motion, I'll ask if there's any Citizen Comment either in the room or online with regard to any item on our Consent Agenda.
Commissioner Layden, I have no online comment.
Okay. And with that, I'll close Citizen Comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I would like to request that item L be polled for discussion after the rest of the Consent Agenda is heard, please.
Do we have any objection to that?
No objection here.
Okay, so that item will be polled. And if we could add that to our agenda, Mr. Pratt, do you want to identify where that would land?
Item L, the resolution making an appointment to the Douglas County Historic Preservation Board, is that correct, Commissioner Thomas?
I'm sorry, I thought that was the Planning Commission. Did I pick the wrong one?
Planning Commission, what I have is K. Kilo. Set.
That's right. Thank you for that correction. It's K.
So item K could be heard at the discretion of the board during the regular agenda, either at the beginning or at the end.
Okay. Let's go ahead and add that as an item 4D on the regular agenda. Any additional? Sorry, go ahead.
Just for clarification, I would be happy if you would like to talk about K right after we do the Consent Agenda.
No objection.
That's fine. Any other discussion? Okay, I will accept a motion.
So then, I have a motion to approve a request for all items in A through J and L through double A of the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that carries three zero. So with that, we will move that item K, and I believe K is the correct one unless we are speaking of K. Okay. So with that, we'd like to open it up with any discussion around that item that was pulled from the Consent Agenda.
So if you would just like to ask for a vote, I would just vote no, then I don't think there needs to be any discussion. We've had discussion in work sessions.
Well, if it please the board, I do have a motion to, on a resolution, make an appointment to the Douglas County Planning Commission for one Stephen Allen of District Two, term expiring in January 2026.
And I'll second that for decorum.
So there's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion?
Yes, please. I've known, thank you so much, Chair, I've known Stephen Allen. I think I'm going on 15 years. It was a conversation that was actually about our community that he and I were having, and I want to say it was in October, and we were talking about many, many things. It was kind of far-ranging. Like I said, we've known each other for 15 years, and Stephen had a comment and an insight, and he's from Castle Pines, and he was discussing elements of Castle Pines' growth pattern in the canyon's area. And he had some very interesting comments. I did know that we were coming up to the end of a term for a District Two member, and I don't know, I was moved by the spirit. Here, we had a very intelligent, very well-educated resident of our county for over 20 years who has an inherent desire to serve, serve his neighbors, to discuss these crazy things that we discuss here and on the Planning Commission that deal with the growth and the future of our county. And so, Mr. Chair, my colleague, Commissioner Thomas, it is truly my honor to prefer before you the nomination for Stephen Allen as an appointment under District Two to the Planning Commission.
And I would just like to clarify that on the notes that the agenda for this meeting that I downloaded, that I prepared, item L is the Planning Commission. So I don't know what was changed between what was printed and what I read from and prepared from over the weekend, but my document over the weekend does show that L is the Planning Commission document, just for clarification.
Thanks for that clarification, and I concur. What I pulled from the Internet does have L as Planning Commission. So if we're okay with that, we'll let the record reflect that it was item L that was polled with regard to this appointment to the Planning Commission.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, just for clarification, I too caught the misnumbering, mislettering, whatever the shuffle was. I would just like to point out to the board, my motion called out the resolution and purpose of said resolution, did not reference the agenda item number.
And to explain why I will be voting no on this, we just had a speaker talk about extremism in the county, and in July of 2020, Mr. Allen posted a cartoon on Facebook that caused a lot of angst and concern, outrage, and that's why that kind of judgment is not something I can support on the Planning Commission, why I will be voting no.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Okay. And, Mr. Pratt, let me just ask, because this item was pulled from the Consent Agenda, I did ask for Citizen Comment on the consent items, and we did not receive any on this item prior to pulling it from the agenda, but would it be appropriate to ask for additional Citizen Comment?
There would be nothing inappropriate about doing that.
Well, just to err on the side of best practices, I will ask if there's any additional Citizen Comment on this item since it was pulled from the agenda and we're having an active discussion about it.
Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Okay. And with that, I'll officially close Citizen Comment on this item L and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion. We have had that motion. I don't believe there's further discussion from the board, so I will call for a vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed, no.
And that passes two to one. So with that, we will move on from our Consent Agenda to our regular agenda items for today, beginning with item number 4A, which is Innovation Funding Agreement between Douglas County and STEM School of Highlands Ranch for $961,504. Luke Thornton, Community of Care Coordinator, presenting for staff. Hi, Luke.
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners. Luke Thornton, representing Community Development. The request before you today is to approve the Innovation Funding Agreement between Douglas County and STEM School Highlands Ranch. On May 13th, 2019, the Board of County Commissioners authorized $10 million to improve the physical safety and provide mental health services for Douglas County schoolchildren, teachers, and staff. As part of that, $1,087,252 was allocated to a contingency and innovation fund. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the Innovation Funding Agreement between Douglas County and STEM School Highlands Ranch, as it complies with all county approval standards and procedural guidelines. This concludes my presentation. Staff and STEM School Highlands Ranch representatives are available to answer any questions you may have.
Well, Luke, thank you for that, and I just want to make some preliminary comments and appreciate the STEM School representatives being here. This report was abbreviated intentionally and consistently with where this board has been as a body since the tragic occurrence that happened at STEM after this board made the decision to partner with the Board of Education and others to provide security for young people in our community. When we talk about physical school security, that is a significant interest for our citizens, for our schools, our staff, administrators, for parents in Douglas County. When we talk about physical school security specifically, we have always been cautioned to avoid specifics that might alert the bad guys of exactly what's happening at a particular school. So we reference generally what has been authorized, but providing specifics, we avoid out of an agreement that we have made throughout this process since the original STEM shooting in order to protect those that were intending to serve. So I appreciate the board honoring that ongoing agreement today. I will just add that, no doubt, STEM School in particular is of extreme significance to Douglas County. It was the location where this tragic incident occurred, and after that, it truly inspired this board to step into a role with governmental colleagues in education to provide safety, particularly for kids. Kendrick Castillo is probably one of the most prolific heroes in recent memory for Douglas County, and the sacrifice that he made should not be in vain. And I'm everyday cognizant of that incredible loss of life that his parents experienced, who, by the way, are still very active and patriotic and committed to the values of this community and this county. So again, it's with high esteem and acknowledgement to the Castillo family and to all the representatives and leadership of the STEM School that are willing to step into this space to innovate, to lead with a level of security that could hopefully be a model for not only the county but the country. So with that, let me ask if there's any additional questions or comments from the board for staff.
I don't have questions for the staff. I do have questions for the school.
No questions for staff.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. So I know that the STEM School representatives are here and available. If you all would like to approach the podium, provide your name and where you reside for the board to hopefully ask a couple of questions.
Hello, thank you for having us. I'm Dr. Karen Johnson, the current interim CEO for STEM School Highlands Ranch.
Hello, I'm Kelly Reyna, the Board President for STEM School Highlands Ranch.
My name is Robert Hornstrom, the Chief Operating Officer for STEM School.
Thank you for being with us. Any questions?
Thank you. Yes, so who is the security officer for your school that will be in charge of this project?
Right now, we're going to contract with an outside firm. It's a piece that we're putting together right now. We have a committee to do that. They have not been selected yet.
So I have, I know I will be outvoted on this, but I have some serious concerns about the usage of this money. I feel like I am handcuffed and hamstrung and not able to ask the appropriate questions. Is there anything in the contract that's public that discloses what kind of project this is?
My understanding is that the contract is kept redacted and confidential for the security measures.
The contract does have the amount of money being spent and that it's for school security, but it does not detail the specifics of that security.
So my concern is that when someone approaches a school, they will see what this is. And what community discussion has taken place to support this decision?
Yes, thank you for that question. Upon the understanding of what our goals are for this innovative technology, we have communicated with our board. We've had numerous presentations to our school board. We have also communicated out to our administration team and to the overall general community. And we have begun a process in which others can become involved in the community. in the community when it comes to implementing this technology. That will include students, parents, community members, staff, administration, and the outside community, excuse me, the security company that we're planning to hire.
So what happens as you go forward with this and the community does not want this? What will happen then?
So that will come into play with our innovation team that we're, committee that we're assembling. And it's not, the hope is not that there will be resistance as far as pulling such a facility out, but coming together and working through those issues. So right now, we have no, we've been very transparent on our process, and so far, nobody has come forward with extreme disdain for the innovation. So we're hoping that we can work together in this innovation committee to implement it. And students actually have had the biggest voice, and they're the ones that are wanting to be part of this committee.
Okay. On December 20th, when the Board of Commissioners discussed this item with you, I received a phone call from Mike Peterson, who's the president of the Douglas County School Board. So when I called him back, we had a long conversation about this. And he indicated that, well, the school district does not support this technology. They support the commissioner's ability to provide you almost 10% of the money we set aside for school security. He did tell me that the school district, under the leadership of their security expert who's on staff, Johnny Gruising, who I happen to know from his time on the FBI, is working a pilot project right now that will be done by the end of January. And at the end of January, the school district will be coming to the commissioners, looking for funding for what they support for school security that will protect all students in schools. I think it's 64,000 students. I just want to make this clear that while this may be a use, these are just documents that I printed off the Internet in one afternoon opposed to this kind of innovation. And I'm very disappointed that the community and the public will not have a broad discussion about this, because they will know what it is when it's installed. I have talked to SROs about this, and the SROs I spoke with in December when we were passing out checks did not support this. They said that there are other ways using their manpower that the schools would be safer. So again, I have all these documents. So that we don't cause a commotion, I won't read all of these, but I have grave concerns about this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Further discussion or questions for STEM School?
I don't have any questions for STEM School. I mean, I really thought we hashed it out well, and we did have to do so in a secured format. We really dug into the weeds. I don't think I'm violating any security concerns when, you know, I shared with STEM School my own experiences in, you know, 20 years, over 20 years of mobile and enterprise computing. My conclusion is I think STEM School brought a very good option before us for consideration. I do think it is worthy of the discussion. I wish Commissioner Thomas would be a little more clear. I too spoke to SROs during, you know, school research officers when we were handing out checks. And I don't know, Commissioner, we obviously were not talking to the same group of, well, I was talking to the group of fellows. So maybe you were talking to other school resource officers. But with all this said, let's bear in mind, we have not yet taken public comment on this topic. So I'll hold off any further commentary. I have no further questions for STEM School or staff, and I'll hold off on any further commentary until we have an opportunity to hear from the residents of Douglas County.
So if I could just clarify, I was speaking with the SROs that were at the Highlands Ranch substation when we were there.
Oh, yeah, me too.
You're asking me to be-
Yeah, me too. Yeah, yeah. I was talking to those guys, and they said they didn't like this. Actually, I filled them in. Maybe they didn't like what I said, because they didn't know about this. And so I kind of filled them in on what I knew, tried to synopsize it, because, I mean, obviously, it was semi-social, as well as an official engagement. So I don't know, Commissioner, maybe I just got a couple of details wrong that they brought concerns to you. I've never been a police officer. I went from serving in the military to going into business for 20 years. So would you like to go into any of the details that, you know, peace officer to peace officer, they shared with you?
So you asked me to be more clear, and so I'm doing this dance so that we don't cause a commotion. There are personnel that will be involved with this innovation. And they told me that those personnel would be more effective if they're going to be funded to be deployed throughout the school instead of at just one point. And one of these reports is about a shooting at a school in St. Louis in October of 2022, where there were seven personnel with this kind of technology, and the shooter got past this technology. Two people were killed, and several other were injured. And that was the topic, that if the officers had been deployed throughout the school, there would have been a better response.
That's fascinating, because they told me that they appreciated the tactic that STEM School is taking. And we heard it briefly in terms of engaging a company who would become super users of the technology and could then be a training base for the technology that then would be a good solution. They thought that was a good way to go, because it still frees up SROs to be SROs in the schools. So maybe, maybe I misstated when they talked to you.
So let me just, if I could interject, you know, I just want to be incredibly clear while still respecting our standards and our protocols around keeping physical school security private for the protection of kids and staff. This is hands down the most vetted physical school security concept that this county has undertaken. We have vetted this for four years. And I will just add, for the benefit of Commissioner Thomas, who served on that board with me and with Roger Partridge prior to Commissioner Teal joining us, that there were a number of physical school security funding dynamics that I didn't fully support. I didn't speak to those, but we did them and we moved them forward. This particular innovation, without revealing any specifics, is at Disney World. It's at the Denver Center for Performing Arts. It's at Coors Field. It's used at the Super Bowl. It's used at the Academy Awards. And if it's good enough to protect kids and adults in the private sector, it's good enough for our kids in Douglas County. We have taken personal visits to see this technology in place. We've had an opportunity to speak with experts in the field around this issue. One thing we've learned since STEM is that nothing's perfect. There is no panacea that is going to protect all kids at all times. But having something innovative that can be a massive speed bump to protect kids and prevent a future occurrence from this happening is absolutely what we're here to do. And in fact, this innovation fund was specifically set up to address this type of school security. Now, I'll say that at the STEM School, there is a very clear motto that says innovation for tomorrow. I can't think of any school that aligns more perfectly from a science, technology, engineering, and math standpoint to vet, to pilot, to pioneer a new technology than STEM School with this innovation fund. So I need to really cast aside the theatrics. I will say, in four years, in my experience, working with all of these experts, talking to all of these individuals, there has only been one significant detractor, and we cheer for her. And that's not to cast dispersions, but I know that when a commissioner speaks to people, it can be intimidating. We have heard from Johnny Gruising that he is no longer speaking to Commissioner Thomas directly about this issue. I believe that's why Mike Peterson had to have the call, because he was getting so many calls and comments from Commissioner Thomas about this. I sit on that part. I know that there are a lot of technologies that the school district is looking at, and we support those. We are a both and institution, and we want to provide as many speed bumps as possible. But again, since the beginning of this conversation, I've heard nothing but continued evolution, support, and growth in this arena. And again, if it's good enough for Disney World, it's good enough for our kids here.
So is the Douglas County School District going to put this in their schools? Is it part of their pilot program?
Who are you asking?
I was asking that to Abe, who was just talking and saying that everyone who went to this liked us.
You know, we have a different Board of Education now than the Board of Education that visited originally. And we know that a pilot of this nature is universally accepted and recommended. I think we need to see how it works on the ground with a specific charter school. Charter schools have the nimble capability to do things that neighborhood schools cannot, and we've heard that. So we will see. I believe in this technology. I've always believed in this technology. I think that once this pilot comes through, STEM will be a leader for the entire county.
You know, Mr. Chair, point of order, please. It sounds like the board is willing to and ready to get to a vigorous debate on the merits of this issue. We do have the representatives of the STEM School still standing before the dais. Do you feel comfortable, given the tenor and the direction of the conversation, dismissing them to take their seats, and then we can open a public comment, perhaps?
I am, Commissioner Teal, unless the board has any additional questions or comments for STEM School.
I do not. How about you, Commissioner?
I have nothing for STEM School. I would like to clarify a comment you made.
Well, hang on.
May I address just one more time?
Please.
Commissioners, okay. So as I listen to this, standing here, I actually applaud the discussion and your research, Commissioner Thomas, because innovation isn't about surrounding yourself with like-minded people. Innovation is this. It is the discussion. It's the road bumps. It's getting through that, and it's finding the solutions. We're not going to come out of the gate doing this 100% great, but our goal is, the moonshot, is that we could get this all over Douglas County and be the innovative county in Colorado. But I can't do that without your research, and I can't do that without your support. And Commissioner Layden, we can't do that alone, and you can't do it without us. So we want to be those partners. And I just wanted to leave you with that.
Well, Ms. Reyna, thank you for that. And your leadership and your willingness to demonstrate what true innovation is, is really appreciated. And it is what we do here. It's robust dialogue and debate.
Thank you. So Commissioner Layden, I would just like to clarify a comment. When Mr. Peterson from the school district called me on December 20th, he told me that you also had been texting Johnny, and Johnny did not want to be in the middle of this any longer. So I was going to Johnny as a retired state patrol officer. I had worked a case with a guy who had murdered his wife with Johnny, and we had talked about this extensively. And I support what the efforts of the school district are to keep all students safe. So I just want to put that on the record.
So, Mr. Chair, it sounded like you cut out for a moment. Are you back with us? Okay, we may be having a technology challenge, so we are going to proceed with public comment. If anybody would like to come forward and deliver public comment on this topic, the podium is yours. And we're seeing none in the room. Troy, do we have anybody who would like to offer public comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. I have no online comment as well.
Okay, thank you, Troy. Once again, checking in. Commissioner Layden, have you, are you still with us? All right. Well, let's proceed. Board of Comment?
So I'll just end with, there is one report by the ACLU that was published on November 2nd of 2022 that is especially critical of this particular technology that I think should be investigated.
So I am moved very much by the final comment by Ms. Reyna. And indeed, and actually, this was, well, Counselor, I really don't believe I'm violating any security protocols when I spoke to this. Again, for over 20 years, my business that I was involved in was the software industry, and it was enterprise computing as well as mobile computing. And it was germane experience. I saw, I recognized things in my experience that I believe the STEM School will be implementing with making use of this security technology. And if you all recall, I actually made a comment about teamwork, didn't I? I talked about the vendor arrangements that you will be making, because, you know, we build houses with hammers and nails, right? But we also build houses with hammers, nails, and saws. And before we even get the lumber to apply the saw, hammer, and nails to, there's been a lumber mill that created the actual lumber that goes into our homes. That's just to build a house. We've been doing that for tens of thousands of years as human beings. In this technology area, this still holds true. Teamwork is going to be extremely important. Teamwork will be required to come together and ensure that this is actually a successful operation. And again, I admonish the leaders at STEM School. This is a serious responsibility that is being placed in your hands. It is a pilot project that could become a model for the entire school district. I think we have, I would like to more accurately paraphrase, though, the comments that we have received from the school district in that a wider solution would be required. A solution for the entire school district would be required. But after going through our planning, it is my opinion that indeed, this is a proper and effective and focused security measure for STEM School. When we talk about what is required for the entire school district, of course, we can take comments out of context on what will work for all the schools here in Douglas County. But I admire STEM School for making, for engaging in the endeavor to find what works for STEM School. And after all, that is the point of the pilot project. You know, I would, though, like to ask a question of my colleague, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner, you actually, you cared very deeply about this. And I got to tell you, there's a degree of admiration on my part for how much you care about this topic. You took extra time to do research to find where the technology that we're talking about using in this security measure has had issues, has had problems. I got to tell you, after 20 years of both mobile and enterprise computing, again, it really kind of takes a village. It takes a village of knowledge. Are you willing to share your research with the STEM School so that they can learn the lessons that you have in order to properly implement this security measure for the safety of the kids who attend STEM School?
Commissioner Teal, thank you. You know, the more- You know, the morning after STEM, I texted Doug DeBoer and said, I know where we can find $7 million to partner with our schools to keep our kids safer. So that's where this all began. As a major on the state patrol, the day of Columbine, I was at headquarters speaking with the director of the Public Safety Department when we got the first call about Columbine. And I spent that day in our dispatch center, trying to figure out what the heck had happened. So I don't want to be insensitive. I want to do what is best for kids. That's why I have been talking to Johnny. That's why I have all of these articles. That's why I've been talking to Dr. Beverly Kingston at CU, who is in charge of the School of Violence Prevention, and listening to what she recommends. So they absolutely can have copies of all this that I have.
Well, see, now, that's what I think the true first step for success in this matter is going to be, is making sure that information gleaned that is germane to this project is shared. I really think that that's going to be a key to ensuring success of this project, because, again, I don't think this is a security matter. When engaging in technology, you got to make it work. And that is not a technological task. That's not a security task. That is a task of human beings, to learn, to accept challenges, to overcome those challenges, and to go ahead and make sure that these simple tools, whether they are a mobile computing system, an enterprise computing system, a hammer or a saw, do real things in our lives. It looks like we might have Commissioner Layden back. Abe, you kind of faded out for us for a while. We did have a discussion. Is there anything you need to repeat, or would you just like to jump right back in?
Well, yeah, and I apologize that the technology booted me out. That was probably my user error, not the technology. But I think it's, you know, a good segue to the conversation we're having. I have been listening to it. And again, you know, research done in the last hour by laypeople, I can't really trust. This has been vetted for four years. I just did a Google search, and I found about 46 articles on the internet immediately supporting this technology, from everything from Yahoo Finance to Marketplace to, looks like business, several articles on Business Wire. I'm not going to share the dates, as Commissioner Thomas did, which I think violates the confidentiality agreement that we had around physical security. So remain concerned about that. But again, I'll just say, I don't think the Disney Corporation puts in innovative technology that is something that is questionable.
Happy to call the question.
Well, thank you for that. We do need to have some citizen comment, so let me at least open it up for any citizen comment, either in person or online, with regard to this item.
I thought we already did that.
Commissioner, we have no online comment.
Yeah, and Abe, we did call for a public comment, and I apologize if it was done while you faded out. However, there was no public comment in the room. We do not have anybody reacting to the second call for public comment, sir.
Perfect, and thank you for that. So I'll bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Well, if it pleases the Board, I do have a motion to approve the innovation funding agreement between Douglas County and STEM School of Highland Ranch for $961,504.
Second.
So there's a first and second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed, no.
And that passes two to one. STEM, again, thank you for being here. Go forth and lead for our county. With that, we'll move to Item 4B, which is a contract with the Department of Public Safety, Division of Criminal Justice, Office of Behavioral Health, for the Multidisciplinary Crime Prevention and Crisis Intervention Grant to fund three law enforcement officer positions to staff new community response teams at the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, Castle Rock Police Department, and Parker Police Department in the amount of $520,740. Maggie Cooper presenting for staff. Hi, Maggie.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Excuse me for one second while I get this.
Take your time.
Thank you. Laura, do you know how to get it up there?
Make it full screen.
Yeah. Oh dear. Thank you. Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Maggie Cooper for staff. I'm here today to seek approval for the Senate Bill 22-145, Multidisciplinary Crime Prevention and Crisis Intervention Grant Funding that was recently awarded to Douglas County. Governor Polis signed Senate Bill 22-145, Resources to Increase Community Safety, into law in 2022, creating three grant programs intended to boost training, recruitment, retention, and resources to increase community safety within Colorado. Two of the grant programs are related to law enforcement workforce, one for recruitment and training, and another for the state's SMART program aimed at recruiting law enforcement officers that are representative of the communities that they serve. The third grant program, and the one which we applied for, is the Multidisciplinary Crime Prevention and Crisis Intervention Grant. The goal of this grant is to support community-based, multidisciplinary approaches to crime prevention and crisis intervention strategies. Douglas County was awarded $520,740 in funding. This grant funding will allow for the expansion of the CRT program from six teams to nine teams by providing funds to law enforcement for new officer and deputy positions, an increased wellness benefit for our clinical staff to aid in retention efforts, and a supportive parenting group for parents of youth served by the CRT. As a reminder, Douglas County dedicated over $2 million in ARPA funds to go towards an expansion of the CRT program. With the ARPA dollars, we're able to fund clinical staff for three new CRTs, provide provisioning funds to our law enforcement partners, and to dedicate dollars to the enhancement and integration of our GeLoda Management, Case Management System with necessary law enforcement systems. The SB 22-145 funding that we are discussing today will allow for this planned expansion to occur sooner by providing funds to the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, the Castle Rock Police Department, and Parker Police Department to hire officers and deputies to staff these new teams. These departments have committed to absorbing these positions into their 2024 budgets. I'd like to talk for a moment about the impact of the CRT program and what this expansion means to the citizens that we serve. Just last week, during our Mental Health Initiative Steering Committee meeting, Chief Kevin Duffy remarked that the teams were especially busy that day. During our meeting, he said there had been five suicidal subjects that had come up on the CAD. This was over the span of 90 minutes. CRT was responding to three of those calls, with others on the way. As you can see, the data is impressive, and the numbers speak volumes about the impact that this program has had on our community. But even more impressive than the numbers is what this actually means for our families, friends, neighbors, and colleagues. It means that at the lowest point in someone's life, Douglas County offered kindness and compassion instead of a jail cell or a hospital bill. It means that when someone was at their wits' end and feeling all alone, CRT helped them find a warm place to sleep that night or a cupboard full of food. It means sobriety for someone who has struggled with a substance use disorder for their entire life. This data represents 6,548 people that the CRT has offered hope to. The expansion can't come soon enough. And thanks to your leadership and the dedication of ARPA funds, and now this SB 22-145 grant, the CRT program will be able to offer that hope, kindness, and compassion seven days a week. Today, I ask that you approve this contract with the Colorado Department of Public Safety to enable us to expand and continue the life-changing work of the Community Response Team Program. Thank you.
Maggie, thank you so much for that presentation. And I don't know, have you presented to us before?
Once or twice, but.
Okay, it's been a little bit. You did a really wonderful job with that. Thank you. Let me ask the Board if they have any questions for Maggie.
Maggie, I don't have any questions. I just want to add that since you have been with us, you have grown and developed and are just such a strong advocate for this program. You know, I remember the horrible murder-suicide that happened in January, Barbara, you're going to make me cry, that happened in January of 2014. That was the impetus to start this program. And for the four years I served as the county coroner, I sat in kitchens and listened to families and thought, we have to do something, but what is something? And you all have figured out what something is. Laura, you have worked so hard alongside Barbara. And you three have made Douglas County a national leader in this program. Our suicide numbers dropped in 19 and 20, and I firmly believe it's because of this program. I've ridden with these officers, and when I see how they interact with people and what they accomplish, it's truly amazing. So thank you for helping us know how to help our community. And in the last week, I know, Barbara, you and I had conversations today about cases that maybe the CRT was involved in, maybe they should have been involved in, but this truly is the way of the future, to keep our communities more safe, more healthy, and more satisfied. So thank you for everything you've done to get us to this point.
Yeah, good job, Maggie.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Good job, Maggie. Hey, please let the teams know how much we count on them and how proud we are of them.
Will do.
So I would just add, every time I hear the reports, the actual statistics about the Community Response Team, it really blows my mind. We often talk in the county about return on investment, and this is one of those areas that the more we invest, the greater the return. And those diversions, those savings for the DA's budget for, you know, our county jails from our emergency rooms cannot be stated enough. You've done such a wonderful job, and, you know, we know that this has become a model, not just for the county, but the state, and maybe even beyond the state. I'm also thankful that in the Douglas County Homeless Initiative, we have analogized to the co-responder teams, and we are using the exact same model of success that you've created here. It's different, but similar, because there's a secret sauce. And when you pair law enforcement with those in social services, mental health care or navigation, it really can be a fantastic team. So I'm thrilled and really excited about the conversation. So with that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to this item 4B?
None seen in the room.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no, and I have no online comment.
Troy, thanks so much for that. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to approve the contract with the Department of Public Safety, Division of Criminal Justice, Office of Behavioral Health, for the Multidisciplinary Crime Prevention and Crisis Intervention Grant to fund three law enforcement officer positions to staff new community response teams at the Douglas County Sheriff's Department, the Castle Rock Police Department, and the Parker Police Department in the amount of $520,740.
Second.
So there's a first and second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that carries three zero. Thank you very much, Maggie.
Thank you.
You bet. So with that, we'll move to our final item on today's regular agenda. It's Item 4C, An Amendment to the Subdivision Improvement Agreements, Intergovernmental Agreements for Sterling Ranch Filings II, DV 2017-128, 3A, DV 2018-452, 3B, DV 2020-055, 4C, DV 2018-274, and 5A, DV 2019-342. Matt Williams, the Assistant Director of Public Works and Engineering, presenting for staff. I'm Matt.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I apologize about the title and you having to read off all those project numbers. This is a change to our subdivision improvements agreement, intergovernmental agreements with Sterling Ranch. So it affects numerous filings out there, which is the reason for the long title there. And, Mr. Chair, I sent you an email with some additional correspondence we received from the Roxborough Village Metropolitan District. I hope that was appropriate. I have some copies here that I'll hand to the county attorney.
That is appropriate, and I do have that by email. Matt, it's not appropriate to give me so many numbers to read, though.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll work on project titles next time.
That's fine.
So this, I don't have a long presentation, but this is a request from the Sterling Ranch Community Authority Board and Sterling Ranch LLC to extend and defer some dates in our current subdivision improvements agreement, intergovernmental agreements that we have on file for Sterling Ranch Filings II, 3A, 3B, 4C, and 5A. There are various dates for the commencement of construction of the various parks within those filings. The Sterling Ranch Community Authority Board, via letter two, the Board of County Commissioners in December, have requested to extend the commencement of some of those parks to the date of July 1st, 2024. I see Gary Debus and Susan Beckman. Gary's with the Sterling Ranch Cab, and Susan, I believe, is with Sterling Ranch LLC. And I believe they do have a presentation for you today. If there's any questions for staff, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, I believe they have a presentation for you.
Matt, thank you for that. Any questions for staff?
I have none, Matt. Thank you.
I'd like to hear the presentation first, and then, Matt, don't go far. I might circle back around with you, okay?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners, if we can have that presentation.
Susan Beckman, Sterling Ranch, 8155 Piney River Avenue, Suite 200, Littleton, Colorado, Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for your time this afternoon. And thank you to the Douglas County staff for working with us to get this request all-in-one package in front of the Commissioners. So thank you so much. Sterling Ranch is the number one bestselling master plan community in the Denver metro area, and we have held that honor for the last three years. Sterling Ranch is a beautiful community with parks and amenities with strong property values. It's no wonder that so many see that purchase of a home in Sterling Ranch is a good investment. It's a development in Douglas County that we can all be proud of. Sterling Ranch is here today to respectfully request the language in five subdivision improvements agreements to be amended to extend the timelines for which construction on some landscaping and park amenities within Sterling Ranch will start. The deferred request is not intended to skirt our commitments, but a request for some additional time to redesign our parks. During COVID, one of the things the Community Authority Board did was it did an extensive survey with the residents. And what they found is, they loved our parks, but our parks were being developed as passive parks. We had trails and trees and beautiful landscaping and places for people to sit and think. And what our community wants is pickleball, frisbee golf, playgrounds. We have several playgrounds, but they want ball fields, they want really active amenities in their parks. And so we want to take a little time, do some redesigning, which we're doing right now, and meet the needs and the wants of the Sterling Ranch residents. Sterling Ranch meets the PD compliance requirements for park acre credit as reflected in this table. And I want to go back to the PD, because we talk a lot about what our commitments were. The PD that was approved by the Board of County Commissioners in 2011 and ratified again in 2013. The park credit requirements in the PD take into consideration two items. One, the acres of parkland that are dedicated at final plat, and that is made up, decided by how many multifamily units we have or how many single-family units we have, and the dollars we spend for recreational amenities. So I'd like to walk you through this, if I can find the pointer. Okay. This first number, the 125 acres, is the park acreage requirement at current date. The park acreage already dedicated by recorded plat is actually already over that number. It is 156 acres. Line 3 is an estimate of the recreational facilities improvement value that uses the formula in the PD that looks at the amount of money spent on recreational amenities divided by the value of a park acre. That number is 443 acres. So as you see, that number, the third line, is actually, it's even more than double what we are required to have dedicated at this time. The Sterling Ranch Park table shows that we are well on our way of meeting our park commitment requirements as we build out over the next 20 years. We currently have developed Providence Park, Steve Blum Park, Pat Gallagher Park, McCormick Park, Pioneer Park, Horseshoe Park, and our newest park, which people from all over the Chatfield Basin come, the Swan River Zip Line Park. We currently have 1,640 families living in Sterling Ranch, and we've spent over $17 million designing, constructing, installing recreational facilities and amenities. We have a pool, recreational facility, parks, and beautiful trails. We're really excited about the passing of the open space and park sales tax. Congratulations to the Commissioners. That passed by over 85%. That funding stream will bring in hundreds of millions of dollars into the open space and park departments in Douglas County. Sterling Ranch will not receive a share back, but we are eligible for the grant process in the open space program. Douglas County Park Program, Sterling Ranch has never received any dollars through Douglas County for Colorado Conservation Trust Fund, or GOCO funds, distributed through Douglas County. Sterling Ranch is unique because we own our own parks, our regional parks, and I know that Highlands Ranch has been brought up in some of these discussions, but we don't receive any park subsidies for our regional parks or any of our community parks like some other metro districts do. With the renewal of the park sales tax, we're excited about the opportunities to redesign our parks and to partner with Douglas County. Today, we're just asking for a little bit more time to plan and to get this right. And we've had a lot of community meetings. We are replanning our parks. And at this point, I'd like to introduce Gary Debus. He is our Sterling Ranch manager. And after he speaks, and we have someone from the community, we'll all be available for questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Beckman. Mr. Debus?
Thank you, Susan, and thank you, Commissioners. Gary Debus, Sterling Ranch Cab. I'm the general manager. 9350 Roxborough Park Road. Our zip code is 80125. I also reside out in Indian Creek Ranch west of Sedalia, and just love Douglas County. Been here for a long time now. Interestingly, I'm also alumni of a 10-year 4-H club, so, you know, I loved having those kids here earlier today, and thank you for what you did for them. That was very special. Thanks for the opportunity to present to you today. Our deferral request isn't because we don't know what to build in our parks. We, during the COVID slowdown, obviously with the things that happened, we all experienced that. Took a little time and a pause to go out to our community and learn a little bit more in 2021 about what our community really wanted in their parks. We had some of it right, and I'm going to show you a concept plan that we had that was already approved and ready to go, but the community said, look, there are some other things we'd like to have. And one of those, one of the top ones, is a pickleball court, or pickleball courts. So rather than waiting for that park to happen, we are currently in design to build those pickleball courts this year at our Overlook Recreation Center and Community Clubhouse on Pine River Avenue. So that will be happening in addition to what we have for the park. These are some of the photos of what we have at our community clubhouse. I also wanted to note that I do have the gentleman that wrote the SIA, IGA, I have a hard time with all those acronyms, Cameron Richards, who is our general counsel for CAB, our in-house counsel. Love to have him here today. If there's any questions in that regard, we'd be happy to have him answer those questions. This is a concept of our original park plan that's been accepted already by Douglas County that we could build. And I just might mention, these lighter green areas, I'm going to show you two concepts just so you get an idea of what we're talking about. These light green areas are really native areas, very passive, as Susan mentioned. Not a lot of activity areas in that particular park. The pool area is kind of just a little old rectangle, doesn't look like a lot of interaction that could happen in that park. No playgrounds and those types of things. So our concept in the Prospect Village, and this is the park that I also would say it is within a stone's throw of Roxborough Village. So those folks in that part of northwest Douglas County will also have access to these parks and their public facilities. And I know we had some comments about Roxborough Village not wanting people from Sterling Ranch to overrun their parks. Certainly, that is a short-term concern. I don't think it's a long-term concern. It may be long-term, short-sighted, in fact, because we aren't going to put up a wall when these parks are open. And this pool is much more inclusive in nature, and the whole facility, actually. There's a playground up here, a lot of other activity areas, including lawn games, multipurpose field. The potential for a dog park, although that may or may not be a great site for that, we're going to vet that a little bit more before we get to that point. But this is also the schematic, excuse me, that we did send to the Commissioners under a separate cover as a funding request partnership to help build this park. Our original park design is about $2.5 million. This particular park is $5 million. We will be here for questions, but right now, what I want to do is introduce Cal Reynolds. Cal is a homeowner and resident and a member of our Community Authority Board, Board of Directors. So I'm going to let Cal speak just a minute as a resident, and then we'll be here to answer questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Debus. Cal?
Thank you. As he said, Cal Reynolds. I'm a resident of Sterling Ranch. And I'm here today, I do represent the CAB, but I'm here today as the founder of Miles from Madison, and that is a 501(c)(3) that we started here in Douglas County. And what I would like to point out about this new park proposal, and what piqued my interest, was the inclusive aspects of it. In the playground, we have some new ideas in there to make it inclusive, and I think that's a great value. But what I would like to start with is Miles from Madison. We started it in memory of my sister, Madison. She lived her life with severe disabilities, but throughout her life, we saw the continued benefits of expanded recreational opportunities. We were fortunate to be able to provide those to her, and now it's our goal to give that to others. Last year, we held our first 5K run in Sterling Ranch. There, we were able to welcome over 200 runners. We had people in the county and out, but I actually did dive a little deeper into our participants, and well over half were from Sterling Ranch or the greater Chatfield Basin area. And I think that that really shows that our community is also in support of expanding these inclusive opportunities. One of the best ways to do that is through a public inclusive park. And for that reason, I applaud Sterling Ranch for adding inclusive play features to the new proposed park design, opening this park up to all, no matter the ability. This is extremely beneficial for those who need it and those who don't. Allowing everyone to participate equally reduces the difference in skill and ability and allows more kids to experience the social and physical benefits of play, which has been shown to be crucial in childhood development. Including these elements further sends the message that the community exists for everyone and helps with acceptance. Beyond this, the inclusive elements also allow adults of all abilities to engage with their children or the children in their care. By including these designs, we can ensure that the new proposed park design will allow an even greater number of our residents to enjoy the great outdoors that this county has. And finally, as a resident, I would also like to address some of the concerns with the deferral itself and that it is causing the crowding in neighboring parks. You know, I would agree perhaps with the older parks, but I've seen in my experience that our parks, there's plenty of room. We've had great partnerships with the state parks that drive people elsewhere and not to the neighboring parks. However, I'm sure there are some cases, but I would argue that those are because of the amenities offered. And by allowing us to do this new proposed park design, we would be actually providing the amenities that our citizens, our residents would like and would stop that. So this new park design is what our residents want, and it's what we will use. And the new design assures that this park will exist for everyone in the community, no matter the ability. And to me, it's well worth a few months' delay to provide a better park for all the residents of the Chatfield Basin. And that is all I have today.
Cal, thank you so much for your presentation. Great job, and appreciate your leadership out there. Anything else from the applicant from Sterling Ranch?
Would it be okay if I?
Commissioner, do you have a question?
Yes. Cal, I would just like to make a comment. I met your mother at an event. It was the ribbon cutting, and she told me about your sister, and that's why I nominated her for the Parks Advisory Board, because I think she could really give us some great information. So just know I haven't given up on that.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Further comments from the applicant? Any other presentation from Sterling Ranch?
No, I don't believe so, sir.
You know, I got a question. Oh, I'm sorry, Chair. May I, please?
Please.
I do have a question, but Cal, I'd appreciate it if you could answer this one, and come on back up to the podium real quick. So part of your presentation, that we've heard from several, was that you saw a change in what was being desired from parks, you're attributing largely to the COVID experience. I think we all understand the changes in priorities that we all experienced during the COVID crisis. How were you qualifying? How did you capture what those changes that were desired were? Obviously, you're elected from your neighborhood to represent them. Is this, you know, when I served on the municipal council here in Castle Rock, sometimes people met me at my mailbox and told me what they thought, and we integrated that into town policy. Is that all that you were doing, or were you guys doing something a little more scientific, trying to gather data, trying to gather metrics to bring these plans before us today?
Yeah, and before I say that, I would like to clarify, my previous comments were not on behalf of the CAB, but I can answer this as a part of the Sterling Ranch CAB, I guess. That was actually a survey done to the entire community that was given to all the residents. I do not have specifics, and I suspect Gary might have more on how that was actually formed, but the elements I saw were just the results of that. But it was a thorough survey. I took it myself, and I think it really well addressed a wide range of options that we would have as a community. It went beyond just, you know, kind of hearsay of, you know, who knows who. Obviously, that plays a factor, but we had very strong participation in that survey.
Okay, then I'd like, my next question is one that, actually, I get a bunch, but obviously, you had some good staff support preparing the data, bringing it to you. So as a representative of your neighborhood, do you feel like the data was presented to you, and do you think these are good, smart moves to make for the neighborhood?
I do. We actually had a metro district meeting soon after this new proposed park design went into effect, or was presented to you guys at the board, and we got very strong responses to that. It was certainly an improvement over what was previously proposed. The biggest thing, you know, the pool was a big selling point. We improved that. But if you look at what you're going to see, there's a lot more to actually do and be active in. If you look at the rest of our parks throughout the community, it is more of that passive design. Not that there's anything wrong with that, but it's good to have that variety as well.
Okay. Those are my questions, and, Matt, I'm letting you off the hook. They squared me away.
I do have a question. Where's the parking lot for this park? Am I?
There is. There is parking right in here. Commissioner, I'm sorry, I should have come to the microphone. There is parking right in here. That's one of the items, you know, we're evaluating is whether this dog park should be there. It's quite small, as a dog park goes, perhaps more parking. There's also parking around the circular street that goes around it, but we want to try to minimize too much traffic in front of people's homes. So that's part of the balance that we'll be looking at going forward, Commissioner. We haven't done design documents yet, or construction documents.
I couldn't tell if that was a parking lot, kind of, on the top left, maybe at 11 o'clock, or if it's that, some kind of a pickleball?
No, those are, those are basketball courts and turf play fields.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have a couple of comments, and first and foremost, thank you to Sterling Ranch and the CAB for presenting today and providing this sort of visionary leadership for the future. I'll reserve my position on this following citizen comment and board discussion, but I want to step back and talk a little bit about the ballot measure. And, you know, Ms. Beckman is absolutely correct. We got north of 87% support for parks, open space, and historic resources, which is more than a mandate from our 400,000 citizens to be bullish on parks. And I think it's fair to characterize our county and our board as being pretty active in this space. In my time on this Board of County Commissioners, I've seen a lot of resources directed to open space in a really successful way. We've got one of the best open space departments in the state, and over 50% of the county is dedicated open space, including the Pike National Forest. So for me, especially in an area where in District 1, we have a high-density population and many young parents that are at parks for most of their weekends, they may not travel south to get to a lot of the open space that this county has preserved, but I promise you that they're at our local parks almost every weekend, and it's a priority for them, and we saw that in the vote. So having $300 million in a dedicated revenue stream for the next 15 years, which was the term of this ballot measure, is really exciting. And so I'm glad that all of our community partners are thinking about this conversation proactively and taking a moment to pause and consider how partnership could look in the future. So really appreciate the presentation. Don't have any questions, but certainly appreciate what you've shared with us today. So with that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment with regard to this item 4C, either in person or online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'm going to close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I do have a couple of questions. I was waiting to see if either of these organizations would be online for citizen comment. I spoke with Ephraim Glass over the weekend, a Roxborough Village Metro District Director, and he tells me that the tennis and pickleball courts in Roxborough are filled with people from Sterling Ranch, and they are looking to have to put in a reservation system so that their residents can use their pickleball and their tennis courts. Are you all aware of that from Sterling Ranch?
No, not directly. I do know, Commissioner, that we've reached out to that gentleman to just have a conversation, show him the park, and talk about some of the things we have in Sterling Ranch as well online that'll be coming in. So, you know, I'm imagining many of the things that Sterling Ranch CAB builds in the future, we may have to have reservation systems as well, most park and recreation districts do around metropolitan areas. So I would love to hear a little more from it.
Okay. And then the email that we were handed at the beginning of the hearing is also from the Roxborough Village Metro District.
the Roxborough Village Metro District, and they are also asking that we deny this because of the impact on their district. So you saw this one as well?
Yes, we did.
Have you had, and you haven't had any conversations with them, or you have?
We've reached out to them and have not heard back as of yet.
Okay. Thank you.
We'd love to have that conversation with them.
You know, when I talked to him, I asked him if there was some kind of a program where Sterling Ranch could compensate Roxborough for them not being able to use their amenities. And he wasn't sure that was a good solution to the problem, just so you know.
Any other questions for the applicant?
And Chair, former Commissioner Beckman has strayed to the podium. I believe she has perhaps a comment in response to Commissioner Thomas's comments of support for the recommended solution.
Thank you, Commissioner Susan Beckman, representing Sterling Ranch. I would mention that we are building two pickleball courts this next year, and so that might alleviate that. And I did reach out to Mr. Imhoff and ask to meet. We have met with the Metro District in the past. We really want to meet with them to see what kind of shared park amenities that we can have in the future. I know that they did a question to the people in their community to get some, a pool and a recreational facility, and it did not pass. And so we have not met with them and told them about this park that we're going to build in Prospect Village and that those amenities will be open to the community. It will be somewhat like a regional park, so they are not aware of that. We plan to meet with them in the next couple of months in one of their meetings and present our plans and maybe hope to bring them aboard to start advocating for some of the park and recreation new tax dollars, because the western side of the county hasn't really been served with the previous park dollars from the county, and we want to bring them on as partners. So we will be working with them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beckman. Other questions from the board?
No other questions. Again, I'll join my colleague, Commissioner Thomas, in speaking in favor of this proposition before us. And if it pleases the board, I would like to make a motion to approve an amendment to the subdivision improvement agreements, intergovernmental agreements for Sterling Ranch filings 2, DV 2017-1283A, DV 2018-4523B, DV 2020-0554C, DV 2018-2745A, DV 2019-342, in which we speak in favor of the motion.
I will.
And you got all the numbers right. Good job. I heard a first and a second. Commissioner Teal, if you'd like to speak in favor of the motion.
If I could just finish my second, I was going to say I second that, but I just need to clarify. Commissioner Teal said he was going to join me in supporting this, and I hope none of my comments thought I was supporting this, because I'm not. So I just want to clarify that.
Well, I was obviously confused. I mean, I didn't know how to interpret it other than pointing out the critical comments from the neighboring community were Sterling Ranch residents who have had a parks development program up until now are feeling the need to go to adjacent communities to have those more active recreation opportunities that we saw presented today. And I mean, and I did see the comments that we received in with the correspondence from the folks at Roxborough Park. Listen, I totally understand. They have a desire to see Sterling Ranch get there sooner than later. And obviously, if their comments are that it's their recreational amenities that they wish you guys would have, I appreciate hearing from the Community Authority Board that indeed this is the direction you're going to. Obviously, Rome was not built in a day. I, well, the benefits of municipal governance that I had in my prior elected position was that I saw this all the time. I saw a developer go into a piece of land, start building houses, start building parks, because we required that here in the town of Castle Rock, just like we do here at the county. And, you know, halfway through, build out. Actually, in the case of, for those of you who are familiar with Castle Rock, the Meadows Neighborhood, which is still just barely halfway built out, even before they were halfway there, it was residents. I was a resident of the Meadows Neighborhood at the time. We did band together and approach the town and say, hey, we'd actually like to modify our plans in a very similar manner. So, I mean, my hat is off to the Cab, to the board for being responsive to your residents. That's a responsibility that we share. I share that responsibility too, so I definitely speak in favor of the motion. I'm all in favor. Please do listen to your neighboring communities. They do have a desire for you guys to get on it quicker than, quicker than later. And then, of course, you know, they're obviously doing things that your residents like. Yeah, definitely. Get that stream of communication going, because you're probably going to find good solutions over there in Roxborough Park that can really be applied right here, right in your neighborhood in Sterling Ranch. But I think it's a great plan. Take some time, guys, okay? But again, I think everyone is looking forward to the great solutions you guys will deliver. I speak in favor of the motion.
Great. So we have a first and a second on the floor. Any further discussion?
I will just add that Sterling Ranch has already received one deferral for this. This is the second one. And when I asked the question to staff about other developers that have asked for this, I was told that's not happened before. So that has played a role in my decision as well.
Thank you for that. So I would just echo Commissioner Teal's comments. This is innovative. It's exciting. This is an emerging community that is really setting the standard for the entire state. And when I think about parks and recreation and what a priority that is for our citizens, there really is not a significant regional park in northwest Douglas County. So in my mind, having some vision, having some citizen input, and some thought around what could be is really exciting. That said, I would agree that, you know, in Douglas County, we don't wait to do great. We want to see something soon. And so with these deferrals, we understand there's going to be a lot more input. But to the extent Sterling Ranch can accelerate its input process and bring forth plans and work with the Parks Advisory Board and all of our staff to identify something that makes good sense, I think that would certainly be appreciated. So I will be in support. Let me ask if there's any further discussion.
Nothing.
Okay. Okay. So seeing none, we have a first and a second on the floor. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed. No.
And that passes 2 to 1. Thank you very much for being here with us. So with that, we'll move to item 5, other business. Is there any other business for the Board of County Commissioners today?
No other business, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Then moving to item 6, the county manager report. Mr. DeBoer, anything for us on your report?
I would like to call the board's attention to two items in the report. One from, on pages 2 and 3, were 1 and 2 from the Health Department. I'd like to thank Mike Hill for all that information. It's got some good stuff in there. And then also, in keeping with the mental health presentation, the board, as part of the ARPA process, put in some place for some suicide grants to different community, suicide prevention grants to some different community organizations. And you'll see in there that's becoming effectuated through a call for applications. So I believe that's on page...
It's on page 3, because that's my topic.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you.
Outstanding. Mr. DeBoer, thank you for that. And your county manager reports are always so detailed and significant. If our citizens ever want to know some of the highlights and accomplishments over recent weeks, that county manager report has it. Any questions or comments for the county manager?
None here.
I have none.
Okay. Okay. So with that, we'll move on to item 7, Commissioner comments. Are there any Commissioner comments?
I do have a Commissioner comment. I would like to highlight that the Commissioners have released a grant for $1.5 million for suicide prevention ideas. The deadline for this is February 24th. You can reach out by sending an email to, just remember, Douglas County Mental Health Initiative. So it's D C M H I at douglas.co.us. I started a nonprofit 10 years ago to raise funds to keep kids alive. It's called A Night with a Coroner. I won't be applying for these dollars. I'm just highlighting this because I know firsthand the need we have to prevent suicide in this county. And the group most at risk for suicide are white males between the age of 45 and 64. So if you have ideas how to keep these folks alive, please apply for these grants. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. And I, one thing we know for sure is that all three of us, this board, this county, and our staff are deeply passionate about mental health. So I applaud your leadership and look forward to seeing those ideas from our community. Any other Commissioner comments?
Only one, and it's a little bit of announcement. Those of you who are veterans, either here in the audience today or joining us online or watching online, it looks like the VA has decided that they would like to put an outpatient clinic here in Castle Rock. It'll be up in the Meadows Neighborhood area, over by Avenus Hospital. They will be having a town hall to discuss the new clinic. They'd like to, they're asking for our comments about how that clinic could benefit us here locally, any concerns we might have, of course. And for those who are veterans, well, for those of you who aren't veterans, there's a reason why we love the Veteran Administration so much when we're veterans and a few reasons why sometimes we have a couple gripes. So whether you have support and you'd like to come in and express your support for the new outpatient clinic, or you're a veteran like me and you have concerns and you've got some ideas on what you'd like to see happen, please come by. It's next Monday at the Castle Pines Library, starting at 5:00 and going till 6:00. You'll be able to meet some leaders in the VA here in Colorado, probably even a couple of faces in from Washington, DC, that are going to be happy to hear our comments, hear our questions. I hope to see you all there.
Commissioner Teal, thank you for your military service and for your leadership with regard to veteran affairs. So with that, I don't have any additional Commissioner comments. We will adjourn. The next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 7, 2023, at 1:30 PM. We'll give it about five minutes for our staff to reset for our next hearing, for our land use meeting and public hearing. So we'll reconvene at about 3:17. Thank you very much.